Mayor had to make the...
They're in the bullfight.
Oh, it's maybe an order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Davis.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rosika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Have a chance to look at your agenda. Move through. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us right on down to the city administrator's report.
Okay, did you want to have any follow-up discussion on the hearing we had on the smoking regulations? I put it in here just so we could talk about it if you wanted to, or not talk about it. All right, we're not going to talk about it.
Well, when are we going to talk about it?
I should put it on the agenda as a line item.
Okay.
If we're going to have an in-depth discussion or take any action.
Well, I feel we need to talk about it. We won't talk about it tonight, but let's do, let's put it on the agenda for December, December meeting.
Okay, so people picked up a set of plans that we had drawn up and came here and looked around, and two issues came up. One is that our ordinance requires that renovations to commercial spaces be prepared by a design professional. Those were not. So the question was, well, shouldn't we follow our own ordinance? But more than that, the lack of detail on some of the, the lack of design on some of the things, like if we're going to put a new door in, if we're going to have a handicapped access ramp, how's it going to be configured, what's, how's it going to be designed, you know, if you're going to, you know, what, what materials are you going to use? I mean, there was lots of, lots of unanswered questions. And the sense was that while they could arguably give you a number off of the plans that we, that we had, because of the uncertainties, it would be a high number, a lot higher, just because they don't know. And that we'd be money ahead by getting some design work done that would create more certainty. So everybody's bidding the same thing. And, and so I went back and got hold of Steve and put that before you tonight so we don't have to discuss it until we get to the item on the, on the agenda. I spoke to the AT&amp;T rep. They have verbally agreed to everything that we talked about. The, and now they're doing the design work on establish the exact height of the tower because prior to that, they were just kind of estimating. Now that they know where the property is going to be, and so they'll, they'll get back to us with that. On the revisions to the downtown Tiff, we have 13 property owners who notified us that they would like to be sequestered or have a, be their own redevelopment area. So Pam has prepared the notices for a November 14th meeting, public hearing on whatever they decide on, the 14th will be November the 26th. And after that public hearing, they will make a proposal for amendments to the, to the Tiff boundary that you will have to consider. The mayor, Dave Bogdan, I went over to the chamber. The chamber is initiating a leadership program. And what it'll entail is that their members will nominate people to participate in this leadership program over one day a month for eight months to learn about various aspects of how St. Genevieve works. The first one will be healthcare, I mean, not healthcare, the government. So we will be putting together a program that will educate them on what city government does. Dina suggested, and maybe it's true, but most people don't think about what, what a city does, what it takes to run it, and that as many of these people will be learning for the first time about the functions of their local government. So we haven't picked a date for that, but we will be doing that in February, oh, February 20th.
February 20th, yes, is the day.
I, as I told you at our last meeting, I notified the interested parties on the developments in Progress Parkway, the conclusion that we couldn't participate in the way that we originally anticipated. One of them has called me since then and is still pursuing it and understands that it would require a purchase of the property, and he's, he's still interested. The auditors have completed their work. I'm not aware of any findings, but we'll find out from them after they get their report together, so you can look forward to hearing from them. But they didn't ask for anything we couldn't provide, and they didn't mention that anything we gave them was unacceptable. Couple of things have come up since I wrote this report, and I want to report to you, and one is I want to ask you a question. The, talking about the fish and wildlife and their desire to acquire property that they would manage on the east side of the levee, their rule is they can't acquire anything that's more than a mile from their existing, an existing boundary for their habitat management. Closest place they have is on the other side of the river, and it is 1.2 miles. So the guy called me, and so I actually sent him an email and asked him what was going on, and he said, "They will be expanding that habitat area, and it will be close enough to, 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 to acquire property in the near future." In the meantime, he's going to propose that we enter into a memorandum of understanding that will get them involved in helping the city manage the, the property. They just can't spend money to acquire anything until it's within those bounds. So it's still something we can look forward to. It might be a year down the road. In the meantime, they do want to establish a presence and work with us on maintaining that, what we have done on that, the habitat restoration. I don't need to, this is going to come up later. Citizens Electric is putting in underground utilities to the museum. That building is currently served overhead. In order to go underground, they need to go out in the road right of way and bring the utilities in. Our ordinance requires that they have an easement for that. It's not covered by their general utility easement. They prepared an easement that I may have presented to you tonight, but I told them our next meeting will be December 13th, and they talked to the construction department and said they can wait for our next meeting so we don't have to amend the agenda or do a special meeting or anything. Finally, a question. We have a situation where a property owner occupied property that used to be commercial on the first floor with apartments upstairs. The apartments were in a sad state of repair, so they didn't bother fixing them up. They did fix up the first floor and occupied it for a while and have since left. We didn't change the billing system because, to reflect that those apartments weren't being, there weren't any water being used, they weren't being occupied. So they received a bill that was higher than it should have been for just the occupancy of the first floor, if you're following me. The billings was for four sewers instead of one sewer. I don't remember hearing about it. Nobody in the office remembers having a conversation about it. Former tenant called me and said they think they're entitled to a refund. The records reflect that they did overpay. There's just nothing in the code that allows me to write them a check. I can, I can make decisions about, you know, waiving fees and, and that kind of thing, but...
Did they move out of the area?
No, they're still, it's in St. Genevieve.
Well, I mean, are they still in the city limits?
Yes. The residence is, but the business is closed.
But the customer, in other words, the individual who allegedly overpaid, they're still...
They're still customers.
Okay, so can you just credit them?
Well, I don't know. That's a good...
How many months did this go on that they were receiving the bill?
Well, the whole time they were there. It's 900, it's $960.
When did they realize?
She said she knew it all along and had complained about it. I don't find any record of that.
Okay. Well, my first response would be, could you just give them a credit for its future use if they're going to be a customer, rather than... That seems reasonable, you know? But that's just my thought.
Okay.
I mean, unless there's some legal reason why we couldn't do that.
Two separate accounts, what do you think?
I don't see there's any legal objection to that. I think, I think it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have a quick motion to approve it, because I don't know that you have the authority without...
Well, I, I didn't think I had the authority, so that would, which is why I chose not to do anything until I talked to you.
Because it's not something you want your city minister to...
So I would make a motion then that we credit them the amount that, you know, to clean up the, the balance.
Credit the amount that they have overpaid.
Right.
Correct. Second.
Got a first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Okay, thanks.
There you go, there you go. Kenny's not able to be here tonight. Any questions for Martin?
Yeah.
He's your worker, so you...
That's true. He reports to me, kind of.
I had a question regarding the fire truck. I read in the report that it's still behind schedule. Is that, it looks like it's way behind schedule?
Forty-five, sixty days.
Yeah. How do we stand on the actual cost of it? Is that still...
It's fixed.
It's fixed. That's what I was concerned.
Maybe get some compensation for the delay?
Yeah, not, not a, not a credit on the price, but we're going to get some features that we wouldn't have otherwise had.
Some extra crony and plate. Someone in J9 rolling up gear shift knob or something. Any other questions? Gary Roth, Gary Roth here.
Hello. My list is, my report's a little longer this month because there'll be a lot less mowing than we need. You guys got any questions on my report? Go ahead.
You still doing that?
Hopefully. Depends on how long the asphalt plant stays open.
You want to focus up on Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe you're familiar with some of the issues with that. I'm curious.
Okay.
I thought I'd bring it up.
Well, I turned right on the point base the other day. I got the signs up and the curb painted and talked to myself.
It's yellow.
It's a good, it's a good thing there's no cars, cars parked on this side of the road because it would have made it more difficult.
I noticed you installed the rides around manhole on Port Center. Do you have any plans on doing any others?
Yeah.
I'm used to that one.
Uh, the one right out here, we had the one for out here at Fifth and Market, and we wound up having to use that on, on an overlay, so I think the other one is in, or, you know. So we got that one for sure yet.
Next big difference.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much, Gary.
All right.
Great to meet you.
Am I up?
Yes, David.
Hey, you have a staff report there. Not a whole lot. Planning and zoning, you see, we have a public hearing here in a little bit to annex some property. Flood plane, I talked about this before, there's some new maps going into effect. The county and the city are proposing to raise the freeboard to two foot. So freeboard is the distance you have to build above the flood plane. It's currently one foot. If you go to two foot, insurance rates for those who build...
For residents or commercial or both?
Both. Would be cheaper, I mean, but it wouldn't affect those who are at one foot. And we're going to have a public meeting, if anybody wants to attend, on November 29th, 6 o'clock here at City Hall, and that'll be in the paper the next two weeks. From a property, property maintenance standpoint, I actually, those numbers are old because I did some more this week, so I've reviewed 167 with 45 left. So you'll get new numbers in December, but there's only 45 left to review.
Got a question?
Yes, sir.
I understand there was a trailer that was condemned by the city?
Uh, condemned? No, but...
Well, not condemned, but...
Deemed uninhabitable.
Okay.
Yes. There was a trailer brought to the attention of the city for a alleged gas leak, I guess a gas leak. I wasn't there that day, but the next day we went back out to do an inspection, and there was sewage going out onto the ground. You could put your foot through the floor. No, I mean, that's the two biggest ones, and the water heater was falling through the floor. There's a litany of little things I could go through, but yes.
So what is, where do we go from here? Is, is it going to be repaired? Is it going to be left to fall to the ground? What are...
The property owner says he would like to repair it, so we gave him two months to repair it. If it's not repaired, then it stays in that state, as does, you know, there are other properties in town that are uninhabitable. He would have to get an occupancy, pass an occupancy inspection in order to put someone in there. Beyond that, it's just uninhab, it's not condemned, it's not going to fall over. It's not in that shape. It's just uninhabitable.
Wasn't currently someone living in it?
There was. They are not anymore.
They wind up good place to be?
She called, and I gave her the phone number of every church, East Missouri, and, help me out here, Family Services.
And she could have taken advantage of a month when, to no expense to her, at one of the local hotels. We don't know what she did or not.
Beyond that phone call, I have not heard from her. Yes, sir.
Is this landlord, is there other properties that he owns or she...
It's a, that's a mixed bag, because he doesn't own the lot. It's a trailer lot. He owns the structure. So I don't have record of who owns the trailers. I have record of who owns the lots. We did find another trailer, two down from there. I need to get inside it, but the owner of the lot cannot get in touch with the owner of the trailer. So he has it bolted shut, and there is no one living in it currently. So I'm going to work with them to try to at least see the inside of it.
I'm just curious if there's more in that area that are maybe in similar state?
Absolutely.
So they're...
Absent, absent invitation.
Right.
By the property owner or the tenant, and can't just go fix it through.
Well, I have some concerns of other properties and trailers, and not only trailers, we have houses that seem to me that are uninhabitable, but they're still a problem for the city, and I, we just went through this down on Main Street, but definitely do not want anybody living in a, and the only way we're going to look at it is, I understand that we have a residency permit. Somebody says, "Hey, I'm going to rent this piece of property out," and there's people moving in and out of properties all over this town, and that's not happening.
Our control is through the change in utilities.
With just water, right?
Just water, yeah.
Yes. Can't do it, and that's what I don't understand with electric. They will... Privacy.
I've contacted citizens, because there are counties or municipalities to our north that work with Ameren, and citizen states, as Jimmy stated, that due to privacy concerns, they cannot share that information with us.
They will not.
Will not, yes, correct.
On the same water, but...
That's why we aren't catching the change in ownership.
So if you remember last month, I talked about an ad hoc committee to talk about some issues around rental properties. This will be one that we discuss.
Do you know how long the party that was occupying the trailer, do you know how long they lived there?
According to the owner of the trailer, three or four days.
So was it vacant before?
Yes, according to the owner. He was just doing her a favor.
All right.
Ameren, at least one of my neighbors now is notifying the city every time you notice changes. They charge, I think, $150 a year.
I talked to two municipalities in Jefferson County who get that information from Ameren, yes.
That's the best way for them to...
Citizens will not. We've tried it.
Well, you know, maybe we ought to go back to citizens, because that's a, it would, it baffles me that citizens would hook and put power to a trailer like that, that could burn to the ground. I mean, and I get that, but...
Can we subpoena?
Well, after the fact, you know what I'm saying, so you can do a subpoena for records, but it's not timely. You know, so you can do it at, obviously you can do it anywhere.
Well, how does, how do the other municipalities get Ameren to...
They signed an agreement with Ameren, and Ameren, it's a one-page...
But that trumps the privacy issue?
There is no privacy issue. It's, it's records from Ameren, so I don't know what citizens, it's, it's records of citizens. It's records of Ameren's. So they can do with what they want with their records. And like you said, it's, it's in the interests of the electric company to make sure that the, the residents or the businesses up to code, and, and so it helps them out, too.
Well, and for instance, over here on Fifth Street, I was cutting grass over there, there's a vacant house over there. There's a big, the electric line going to the garage is looping under, you have to lift it up, and it's live, the power's live.
That house did not sell at auction today?
Yeah, so it's a...
That's a public safety thing.
Yeah, well, the power's off now because of the family, they moved out, it's been shut off.
No, it's been, I don't know, Jimmy, you were here, it's been four, five years since we last asked. I guess we can ask again. Try again.
Citizens?
Yeah.
No, no, I just asked citizens two weeks ago.
Oh, excuse me, it's only been, well, three weeks ago, maybe.
Get a copy of these other, and show them that, hey, you have...
I think they bear some responsibility here.
So do I.
I do, and, and it's going to kill, if we have power going to one of these, well, it's going to eat up our resources because the fire department's going, it's, we, and I think we bear a little responsibility.
If it had an ordinance requiring it, they would have to abide by the ordinance to do business here, wouldn't they?
It's a matter of public safety, you know? And, and it's not about making money, to making sure we have occupancy, the permits and everything, it's public safety. These girls should have never been in this trailer. It was, and there's more of it going on.
Would it be beneficial to have Mark ask them?
Sometimes you get different answers, and he had a, like, I had a...
You know, I, I think, I don't know, but I think this is a policy that was adopted by the board of directors. It is an elected body, and, and I think our appeal should not be to the current management, it should be to the board. And how we make a formal appeal to the board of citizens, I don't know. Find out.
Maybe you and the mayor could go talk to them.
Yeah.
Maybe so. Would they be bound to follow an ordinance if we were to pass one?
Uh, let me think on that one. I want to get off the cuff on that one, if we can even do that, force them off to become that one.
So how you got to write the ordinance, basically, is...
That's his job.
You got to have a context.
Well, I mean, we require landlords to give us information in order to, or, no, do they, they don't have business licenses, do they, for rental property or anything like that?
No.
Why not?
It's a business. If we require other businesses to have business license, why not?
Not one of the things that's in the ordinance requiring a business license.
All right, I'll look into that. I don't, I've never had to deal with that before.
We do, we do require them to register. Now, they don't all do that, and then it's difficult for us to, to police that, but there is an affirmative obligation on the part of someone who rents out their property to register with the city. And I guess we get most of them.
You just sent out letters.
I just sent out about 250 letters, I don't know, five weeks ago, and I gave them till the 16th of November because the letters went out late. That was an extension of a month, and I've probably gotten, I don't know, 250 responses out of, I probably sent out 300 letters, 350 letters, but that was for approximately, I think we talked about 800 properties. That's everything from a trailer to an apartment to a rental house, so. Good?
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Any committee reports? Any public comments? All righty, at this time, at 6:25, we'll open up a public hearing to, for the annexation of the following real estate in St. Genevieve, Missouri, southwest of the intersection of St. Mary's Road and US Highway 61, parcel ID number 07-8.0-027-03-007-002.00. And David, you might want to come back up here, too, if there's any questions. Any questions? Where's the property?
Southwest corner of 61 and St. Mary, right next to Cody Teak.
Does this property touch the city limits?
It does. It backs to a property, properties on St. Jude. It is contiguous with city limits, yeah.
What do we have to do if we annex?
We're supposed to provide service, but service is available at that site, so it's...
We have water and sewer at the site already. If I looked at the right thing, it looks like there's some construction going on there right now.
I believe so.
So if there's waters...
I mean, it sits in the county right now, but I believe there's a dog pen being installed, a large...
We're getting a pad.
Oh, wait a minute. Sir, can you guys, you both come up to the...
Come up to the podium if you're going to speak, so they can pick up your...
Identify yourself, please.
Okay. Name's Ray Ziegler, and right now, it's in the process of getting some trees removed, and also, we're getting a pad for a dog kennel and a little small shed that I use for a feeding shed for my dogs, you know, to, I keep my feed for my dogs in this little shed.
How many, can I ask you a question? How many dogs do you keep, you're going to keep there?
Three.
Three dogs? Okay. Are you going to have a residence there at all?
No.
This is just, just to keep your...
Yeah.
You live in Jamesville, right?
Yeah.
About Spring.
Spring, yeah.
Three, three things going on at one time. This, is it, you live where?
Valley Springs, yeah.
Okay, sorry. Okay. So what's, what's the advantage of having this in the city as opposed to not in the city?
Convenience for myself, like, you know, I got beagle dogs, and I do a lot of rabbit hunting all through the winter, and I was, the farm that I have the dogs on now is sold, and therefore, I'm, I'm needing the dogs moved, and so we bought that property to move the dogs.
But you bought it, you're annexing for the purpose of getting the utilities?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I have a question for Mr. Bogdan.
Yes, sir.
As far as I know, if you want to build, like, say, a garage within the city limits, there has to be a house on the same piece of property. You can't just put, or what is the zoning? I mean, well, how is this going to be zoned? Because my question is, how can you put up a structure there that's in the city limits if there's not a residence there, unless it's commercial? Is it commercial?
Two answers, or several answers. One, I mean, it's currently in the county, so he can build, right, right. He can build what he wants, by the county's rules.
Right.
Two, it comes in, any, any property... Two, it comes in, any, any property annex comes in R1, residential. At that point, and I've, I've informed Mr. Ziegler this, if he wants to rezone, he can go through that process. So you can ask to be rezoned, commercial.
Once, but once it comes in, whatever structures are on it will come in with it. But when it's limited in on anything else he does to the property, to the, to the regular, the R1 zone difference.
Does our ordinance now address any kennels or anything?
Well, no, I think Alderman Zieker's pointing out that, that what's going on now are considered accessory structures. In order for a structure to be an accessory, there has to be a primary structure. So, this is all basically that, 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 that will be allowed there, uh, because it'll be coming in with it, unless he's gonna build a primary structure. They couldn't build more kennels or more sheds.
And you can't put a garage on a vacant lot?
Yeah, and that was my point, and I realize it's not a garage, but it's still an accessory structure, so I don't want us to get into a situation where we allow something to happen that we don't let anybody else do. That's what I'm, that's my concern here, so I need, I need to hear some more input.
Well, I guess the, the, the structures would be built before the official annexation, so it would be annexing the property that already has structures on it. I don't think you would then go in and say, "Well, I know we can't."
Right, right.
You wouldn't say, "You gotta take this property down, or this structure down, because it doesn't fit up the zoning."
If we were going to allow it, it would be a special use permit.
Then there would be some requirements?
You'd set up kind of limits on, but, but what, what he's going to be doing, the kinds of things that you normally limit through a special use permit, don't really apply. You don't have hours of operation, you don't have parking, you don't have lighting, you don't have...
And you're just, you're just kind of, if I understand, you're looking for a place to keep your dogs?
And I will have a machine shed there. I've got a tractor and a trailer that I would like to put in a machine shed.
That sounds like part of the route.
Yeah. Right, right. So it would almost, then, it would almost, David, it would almost have to be rezoned then? If that's all that's gonna happen, I mean, would it have to be rezoned as commercial then?
I mean, if it comes in R1 and the structures are there, and, and it's voted in, I, I don't know that it would have to be rezoned, because when the zones and the ordinance was created, everything that was there was acceptable. It was non-conforming, and this would also be non-conforming.
Right.
Seems like there's a question on the timing of this, though, are we...
Boy, that's my question, is, we're gonna be voting a first reading of this, and then a month from now, we're gonna have the second, and nothing, there's, nothing's gonna be built. That can't be built, a machine shed and all, it's not gonna be built in a month.
Right.
So that's, that's my whole...
This is my, also, that's an extension of why I'm asking these questions, because I'm having a hard time with it.
I mean, if everything was on there right now, I would say that...
If it's not built, and he comes in R1, then we can go through the zoning process. He already understands that he would have to have a building permit once he comes into the city. We've had that discussion.
So you want public, or you want city utilities there also?
Yes, I agree.
Wants water and sewer, yes.
How do we have water and sewer down there now and stuff, when it's out of the city limits?
It's right behind St. Jude. The lines run at the back.
In the property, but it's to the property. Oh.
The lines go through there.
Where are they going to?
St. Jude.
So, I have a question. So, so are you going to have these structures in place in the next 30 days?
No.
Well, would, would, do you have a timeframe for when you...
We was told to wait until February the 15th.
So you haven't poured a pad or anything, I take it, right?
Well, we was okay for pouring the pad for the dog kennel.
Okay, there is a pad, okay.
Well, there's the, ready to pour pad.
Yes.
Well, there's forms up or something.
Forms up to pour concrete for a pad now.
Yes.
What are your thoughts, Mark? Well, that's why, I mean, I'm just...
Well, I mean...
Seems to me it's a slippery slope.
If I were the petitioner, I would not petition for this until I have my structures up. Uh, because you're gonna have a hard time getting approval for that shed, a standalone shed. I don't know this property, I don't even know how to visualize it, because I haven't been there. But if, if I had a plan to use that property for a particular purpose, I'd get that purpose in there, and then ask for approval to come in, and then you grandfathered in. Uh, because otherwise, there's no guarantee that you're gonna be able to use that property the way you want it, and you're gonna petition to get out of the city, or, or maybe you have to...
Because I've known of more than one instance where people have wanted to purchase a lot that was vacant or whatever, to put up a garage. But you can't do it, if there's not a house there, if you're in a residential area. So I just don't want us to get into a situation where we allow something, and then we get a lot of people angry at us, rightfully so, because...
We didn't follow our own rules.
Exactly. So, you know...
Got an architect's contract on here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Can, can we still provide him?
I think that's what he's gonna want to know, if he want, if he was gonna wait. I know you can't say absolute, but then can he come in, because he wants the water and the sewer? That's what's...
Can he just buy the water and sewer?
No.
Didn't, I thought there were some...
Yes, the other is.
There are.
Yes, there is.
There are. People being served that aren't in the city, but they were there before you adopted the restriction on them.
Oh, okay. Alright, well...
Did the, the other properties annexed, had, had we brought the water line down from...
We didn't, they installed that line in the tunnels.
Yeah, that's their line.
But they were annexed.
They were.
And they installed their own line up to the main on Valley Springs.
Down, yeah.
So our advantage to basically tell him now that we would probably give him water and sewer is we put a structure and a vacant lot on the city tax basis, then? I'm sorry, our advantage, yes, it would, it would become... Right, he would be paying city taxes. Property taxed to the city, and the structures would be assessed accordingly. And he would start paying...
Is it possible that the, um, if, if, he lives in Valley Springs, a distance away from where they're keeping the dogs, is it possible the dogs could be a nuisance to neighbors there if they're barking and you're not there to know?
Well, this, this would be another thing too, because right now, he stated, which hit three dogs or something like that.
Yes.
And, and don't take this as anything towards you personally, but it opens the door for, if we don't have a limit on that, where can it go from there?
I mean, like a public kennel?
That's another thing to consider, you know, and I'm not saying that that's what you're intending to do. Let's say you sell the property, and somebody else buys it, and while he was keeping dogs there. There's, there's another potential, well, they wouldn't have the special use permit.
Well, he, if he builds it and comes in, there is no special use.
There is no special use.
But, but, if you wanted to keep more dogs there, build additional pens, you wouldn't be able to. So the restriction, the, the...
Conditional use permit?
Delaying annexation until he completes building it, and then bringing it into the city, keeps it from being anything other than what it is when it comes in. So he can't add any kennels? No.
Okay, well...
Or we rezone it, uh, and apply the special use permit, which would establish restrictions on its use.
That's right.
What's the neighbors' thing?
We don't know.
As, as a homeowner, I would be concerned about someone housing dogs next door to me without them being there.
If you look, are the dogs gonna be where the concrete pad is?
Yes.
So the, the, the closest neighbor, I was down here today, is the backside of, of St. Jude. There's homes that are up the hill, somewhat of a distance.
Sort of face that.
Yeah, they do face that. The back doors, but, you know, and you're talking probably about...
Five or six houses pretty close there.
Within, probably within a couple hundred people.
Yeah, storage units are there.
I thought they always send letters to the neighbors.
Only for rezoning. And a special use permit is treated as a rezoning.
Well, I would think the best way to...
This is just a public hearing.
This is just a public hearing.
And then later in the agenda is when you actually make a decision. So unless there's more information factually, but if anybody has any questions about the application, now would be the time to do it, otherwise, I'll finish it up and then discuss whether you want to do it.
But, but your advice would be to...
Are you doing my advice? Wait until you do.
So if he puts up a structure now, he's only governed by the county's codes.
Can I add one thing to this? He's gonna put up the dog kennel, he's talked with the county about that, but the other structure, this property sits in current floodplain, okay? But it comes out of the floodplain, according to the new maps that I just mentioned on the staff report.
In February.
February 15th. Thus, the February 15th structure, because then he doesn't need an elevation certificate.
That's why he was told to wait.
So, that's why he's waiting. So he can't build that until February 15th.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, well, that's, there's no other questions, I'll close the public hearing, it's 6:41.
Thanks, Ray.
Okay, get a chance to look at the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, takes us to old business. Bill number 4249, an ordinance calling for the general election of officers for the City of St. Genevieve in Missouri to be held April 2nd, 2019, and providing notice to the general public.
Motion approved.
Second.
I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Zieker?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4249 now becomes ordinance 4183.
Thank you.
No.
4249.
Oh, okay, sorry, my, my bad.
Okay, that takes us to bill number 4250, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Turnkey Mobile Inc. For the purchase of two mobile data terminals, the amount not to exceed $8,410.
Motion approved, second.
I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Zieker?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4251 now becomes ordinance 4183.
Takes us to bill number, 4251, an ordinance approving a tax exempt equipment lease, purchase agreement with First State Community Bank.
Motion approved, second.
Okay, I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Zieker?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4251 now becomes ordinance 4183.
Thank you. Bill number 4252, an ordinance to the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending Schedule III parking restrictions. Table III, handicap parking.
Approved, second.
I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Zieker?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4252 now becomes ordinance 4184.
Okay, it takes us to new business. Bill number 4253, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Turnkey Mobile Incorporated for the purchase of two mobile data terminals, the amount not to exceed $8,410, and amending the general fund budget number 10, the police number 16.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can, can we please get a second on this, so we can order these at the same time we ordered that ordinance that you just approved?
Motion for a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I need a roll call for that? Okay, so we will have a second reading.
Aye.
On bill number 4253, an ordinance approving a bid proposal from Turnkey Mobile Incorporated for the purchase of two mobile data terminals, the amount not to exceed $8,410, and amending the general fund budget number 10, slash police number 16.
Motion to approve, second.
I'll have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Zieker?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4253 now becomes ordinance 4185.
Takes us to bill number 4254. This is an ordinance providing for the annexation of the City of St. Genevieve's existing corporate limits certain real estate property owned by Raymond and Carol Zeckert.
Can we move to table?
Absolutely.
I, I would move to table.
I would second that motion.
Will you be fine with that?
Yeah.
All in favor?
I guess what I would say, let me, let me just say a couple things. The, the question for the board is whether or not the application is reasonable and, and reasonable and appropriate of the circumstances and the uses of the property currently. And so, it, I, I don't know that you can make a finding otherwise, because currently it's a vacant property, and, and it's contiguous to the boundaries, you have utility services available to it. So, those issues with regard to future uses are not necessarily the concern of this board now. It may be a concern of a property owner, because if you, if you allow the annexation, he's gonna have to go through a different process to get these buildings put on there. And, and so, there, there's a timeline for when the application is, is submitted, and when the hearing is held, but I don't think there's a specific timeline for when you have to make a decision. But you, you got, you had the hearing today, I would put this decision off no longer than the next meeting, though. But I don't know if that does him any good, but you're, you're left in a situation where there may be concerns he has with regard to his future uses of the property and not being able to do that according to our code. But that's not necessarily before the board now. Does that make sense? So if I were him, I would either withdraw the petition and get done what I need to get done and bring it back, or I would want to get those services started, and then have to go through the process of getting the approvals after I'm annexed. But that's really a decision for him to make, so I, I would, I would go along with the tableing, but just really until next month, for really him to make a decision. Because I don't think it would be good, good for us to annex in the property now, and then make it more difficult for him to do what he wants to do with the property. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Uh, so in a sense, I just want to table it for him to make a decision when he wants to move forward with that process, or if he wants, uh, you know, with the annexation, or if he doesn't. But I don't know if he wants to reconsider that or not, but, but I think if you bring it in, he's gonna be subject to our code and our building requirements, and, and I don't know that machine shed is gonna be approved. I don't know. This, I know in my other cities, it may not, depending on where it is and the property, it's subject to the regulations. But, uh, I don't know if that answers any questions, but I would think we need to make a decision sooner or later, by the next meeting, which I think is now a full month away.
It's a full month away, yeah.
Right.
I think that's the best way to do this, because I think it's gonna be very difficult.
I agree.
You know, there's some good points.
So do we have a motion?
We have a motion in a second.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, all in favor of table it till next meeting?
If you want to make the motion, I'll withdraw, then you can...
We got two motions already, and all I need is a, all in favor of table in this?
Aye.
Motion approved, alright. Very good. Takes us to bill number 4255, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with vacant commercial design, an amount not to exceed $12,100 for the architectural and engineering services for the City Hall Police Department remodel project.
I have a question.
Very good.
Takes us to bill number 4255, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with vacant commercial design and amount not to exceed $12,100 for the architectural and engineering services for the city hall police department remodel project.
I have a question.
Very good.
What was the amount you just told? $12,100?
Yeah, it, it changed in discussion. There was an item left off of his email that was added to the contract.
The question I have, can we tie this contract to a budget amount? Um, I see it so many times and stuff where when the architect gets involved, whatever budget, whoever has, uh, goes by the wayside, and then all of a sudden we have a, a figure for a project that's considerably higher than what we're anticipating.
Well...
That's a good question.
And it goes back to that it has to be rebid and redrawn and more architectural fees and...
He will be meeting with us to determine what, what the materials list should be. He's going to, he, we have given him the basic floor plan and design. We will be picking the, the materials so that he didn't give us gold plated hardware or floor coverings that are, you know, high end. So we'll, we, we will be controlling that, and, and that is really the item, the kinds of things that are, uh, ill-defined in what we currently have out there. They just can't, you know, so what doors do you want? Uh, so we'll be able to keep the cost down by selecting the materials that are consistent with what we priced out when, when we looked at. Now, the thing that I can't tell you is what's the proper design for a new doorway into this room and handicap accessible ramps? Because I, I, that's not designed. Uh, so I, I, I don't, he didn't have corks rods, he's not going to be like an architect's going to go out there and assign a monument to himself.
Will he provide us with an estimate?
Have we discussed the budget?
Yes, we've told him what we, and he said, well, you want me to just do it as a percentage? And I go, no, I don't think the value of the work should have any effect on the cost of your design. So, uh, so we didn't do that.
Does this figure include engineering approval?
Yes.
A stamp?
Yes, he'll, he'll seal these drawings. And then contractors who say, you know, if, if I were remodeling this, or my building, I'd have to get that, will be satisfied.
Well, yeah, I mean, any, anybody that's put an addition on or done anything that's a commercial structure has to abide by that.
Yeah, and socially, yeah.
That's the reason we shouldn't.
Will he be doing any inspections or is this left up to us?
Just the design, yeah.
Just the design, okay.
We'll do our own inspection.
Okay.
The, um, but I can't tell you at the end of this that the bids are going to come in where we think they will come, although I think we have a level of confidence based on Gary's experience and, and the work Eric has done on pricing materials, I think we, we have, we have a sense of, of where it's going to be.
But we have the final say, if that doorway looks too expensive, we can go with it or not.
Well, we, I don't think we can remodel this bill. Yes, we could eliminate that because we already have a handicap accessible route through the front door. We were trying to make it so that this room could be used without having to go through the city hall office, but...
Sure, but I mean, a push comes to shove.
Yeah, that, if that ends up being a $50,000 item, then...
That's just an example. We can use this floor covering or we could do something less expensive or...
Yeah, we're not, we, again, we're going to be in control of, of the materials list.
Motion to approve. Before you go any further, I just want to point out on my agenda, let's see, the, the agenda list...
I want to seize the moment.
Was for a contractor to see $12,100.
And it's, it needs to be approved for $12,700.
The ordinance is right, I just, this just differs from the, what's described in the agenda. So the ordinance has the right amount, which is just $12,750.
Okay, the ordinance that was presented to them in the, on the agenda was $12,100.
Right.
And in the meantime, I changed the ordinance to the $12,750.
Right. That's what I just want to point out, that's what they're going to...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Uh, could we do a second reading so we can maybe get this going?
Move for a second.
I second the second.
You second the second? All right. All in favor of a second reading?
Aye.
All right. It'd be bill number 4255, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with vacant commercial designing, design and the amount not to exceed $12,750 for the architectural and engineering services for the city hall police department remodel project.
Motion to approve.
No, you, you...
No, after you. No, Joe's first.
Second. So we have a first and a second. Like to have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Zieker?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4255 now becomes ordinance 4186.
Very good. Takes us to other business. Considering establishment of open burning? Move to December 31st.
Second.
Starting now? Okay. That's what I thought.
I would like to see that up through February instead of just, can we do that?
What was it last year?
I don't know, but you, you got it all winter long, March, usually your March winds come involved, so I would think we should do that all the way through the winter into, into February, to the end of February or... I'll change it to that. What's the mayor want?
To the end of February?
To the end of February, yes. There you go. From now to May 11th. All in favor?
We'll blame them on that.
Very good. Uh, is there any other communication? Then I would like a motion to go into closed session to talk about personnel.
Second. Make a motion to go into closed session.
Second. He, he first did, I seconded.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Zieker?
Yes.
Motion to hear.[1728.82]